Good evening, we have a call, we'll call a planning board meeting to order. And first up for general information, Mr. Dwyer.
Uh, we have, uh, let me get back to my screen. Uh, that would be Steve Packard.
Evening gentlemen, how are you?
So there we go.
Good, I have a project for the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority. It's right on the border of Amherst and Hadley, it's on the UMass campus. The project is to do new electric bus chargers for their incoming fleet, uh, like for later this summer. We're looking to have them installed, uh, around June, July, that timeframe. Uh, so I'm here tonight to speak with you about the project and I think that this is a, I could get a site plan review waiver, um, from you, I just, I'd like to go through the project to, to make sure that, you know, that can be the case. And if not, then we'll go through the site plan review process.
This is kind of an unusual request in as much as that many years ago, when the, uh, when the, the bus station was being built at, uh, we thought they were going to come to us for a site plan and they claimed no, uh, the University of Massachusetts is going to build it, then they're going to turn it over. So they used the Dover Amendment to get around the site plan. So somebody probably didn't give you some of the history of the loopholes that they.
Well, it's, it's more than the Dover Amendment when it's the state that's doing it.
Where are those going to go, Steve? Again?
Where are the chargers going to go?
Yes.
They're going to be at the facility at the southwest corner. I can show you where they're going to be.
Let me, uh, enable sharing.
So who pays for the electricity?
It's coming from the UMass power system.
Okay, I have it set for all participants to share.
So if I zoom out a little bit, Hadley's on the left, Amherst on the right. And then this corner of the UMass campus, this is the building here. So the curb cut for the building or for the site is in Amherst, but the facility isn't, it's in Hadley. It's along Governor's Drive here.
Okay.
So this is a grading plan, I also have the electrical site plan. So this corner of the building, it's the southwest corner, that's where we're looking to install some electrical equipment along the building. There's a 650 kilowatt generator plan as well as some transformers and, um, there's a Vist switch that UMass is requiring. Be connecting to the power source that's in the street along Holdsworth Way. Again, it's on the, uh, UMass's power. And we're not altering the building in any way. The only alteration is we'll do, do a metal covering for some conduits that are going along the face of the building. Uh, that's really the only alteration that we're planning. But it's a 650 kilowatt generator, it's going to bring 1,200 amps to the facility. Uh, it's only intended for emergency use. Uh, the reason why they're upsizing it is to support the electric bus fleet that's incoming this year. And they'll have, I assume several more in the near future or in the, in the future as they phase out their diesel fleet.
How many charging stations?
Uh, so that there's two chargers and there's going to be two chargers in the building right now.
Okay.
That, that could grow to six within the building for this. Right now they're planning for two outside, two chargers.
How many bikes you, for, for charging bicycles?
Uh, buses, 40 foot New Flyer electric buses.
Where else in the valley do you have chargers?
Of this size, there aren't any. There's some smaller 75 kilowatt chargers that are for, um, personal vehicles. They're around, around campus.
And, and how do you anticipate getting to the buses through Hadley? And the charges through Hadley, you're going to be cutting, you know, up Rocky Hill Road and, uh, are you going to be coming to the center of Amherst and driving down or what? That could be a concern.
When we have a contractor on board, uh, I'll know more, but I can certainly direct them to avoid.
Yeah, we, we certainly don't want these buses, at least I don't, going down the back roads of Hadley just because it's shorter, a shorter route.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the issue. Question is whether we even have site plan approval jurisdiction over a, basically a building on the UMass campus. And I did ask, um, Steve, if he knew whether he would even be using the local building inspector or the state building inspector for the, uh, the project. I don't know if you have any more information on that, Steve?
Yeah, so the PBTA, unlike other transit agencies around the state, they own their buildings. Uh, so it will be a local building inspector.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Bill, but it is an issue if they cause deterioration of Hadley roads. I mean.
The buses, the buses are on a route, whatever it is.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, we're not discussing the bus routing with PVTA. We're discussing the bus building with the, um, designer of the charging sta- This is actually, I understand that this is a generator to provide backup charging for the bus chargers that are already installed or will be installed inside the building.
Okay.
So, uh.
So the charging equipment will be along the side of the building. The actual dispenser where they connect to the bus will be inside the building. And the, the generator will be outside, it's a diesel generator.
And that's an emergency generator for when the whole UMass grid goes down.
That's right.
So the PVPA is not part of the university system at all, is it?
No.
So you're basically giving them electricity?
UMass is giving the PVTA electricity, correct?
So your request is to waive site plan approval for basically backup generators, right?
That's it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to waive site plan approval for the backup generators.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is, Mark, are you on?
I am. Do I need to recuse myself as I work for you, man?
Yeah, they're.
Only if you ride the bus.
So yeah, why don't you just abstain?
I will abstain, yeah.
Okay, motion passes four, zero with one abstention. Okay.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, and we had, uh, let's see, Tim Zhang?
Tim Zhang is next, I think.
Yes. Hey, everyone, I am Tim Zhang from Kinley Horn. I am here representing Target. This Target site is on 367 Russell Street, Hadley, Massachusetts. And Target is proposing to, um, expand their current drive-up stall configuration. I can share my screen to show the area interest. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the current drive-up stalls on site are, um, right here. It's a little blurry, but hopefully you guys can make it out. And we're proposing to expand these four spaces to 24, um, drive-up stalls instead of four. Uh, we're seeking administrative approval from planning board for these stalls.
Couple of questions on this.
Sure.
You're eliminating about a dozen parking places by the appearance of this project.
Correct, we're reducing parking and by approximately six spaces.
Well, okay, six, six, six spaces. Will you still have enough two-for-one parking to meet zoning requirements? I don't see those calculations anywhere.
We do not have zoning calculations right now, but our, um, in terms of traffic, we're, we should be actually reducing traffic because of the quick turnaround of the drive-up stalls.
That, that's irrelevant. Plant zoning requirements say you shall have two parking, two feet of parking area for each square foot of building. The fact is that you're eliminating the equivalent of six parking spaces of, there's so many square feet of parking. What will your, what will you have for a calc- will you still have two-for-one parking after that is done?
I do not have that answer right now, but I, I will recalc.
Okay, without that calculation, we can't give you anything.
And another question, uh, I note that the poles are red, is that correct?
Yes, they're red.
Which is essentially Target's color, red, right?
That's correct.
Will there be any, be any lettering on the poles?
Uh, when you say pole, I can actually pull up the detail. Do you mean the beacon or the post? They both will have lettering.
Yeah. So essentially, I, I would think that this is probably additional signage.
Do you have any place around here that has this that we could take a look at it?
Any place around this, um, not that I'm aware of. I'm actually not too familiar with, um, the town. It's my first.
I mean, in the, in the valley, I mean, there's a lot of Targets in the, in the valley. Is there another Target within 50 miles radius that has this stuff that we could look at it?
I do not know that, but I can definitely reach out to Target and see if they have anyone, any store that already has this implemented.
Because the pictures that we see are very, um, they, they don't give us the whole, what it's going to look like. They show us one or two little stanchions. But when you look at the whole parking lot, what is it going to look like in the parking lot? To me, this is, this may not be the most attractive thing they're putting in a parking lot.
Exactly, exactly. It looks like you're going to be going down the midway of the three county fair.
You know, I mean.
Well, Jim, Jim, you bring up a point that I was about ready to, you know, when Target, when Target, uh, purchased the, uh, the, the land, the building from Pyramid, they took away a lot of the green space when they repaved the, uh, the parking lot, so, uh, I, I don't, it's not germane to this particular issue, but.
We don't like it.
So.
What is that for?
Drive up.
Huh?
Drive up.
Drive, huh?
So this, this is one thing, uh, this really could be considered parking if you got checked. Just for example, uh.
Two levels?
Walmart has designated spaces for people picking up their, uh, pharmacy prescriptions.
Correct, it would be similar to, I believe Walmart has a similar program where they did, they do have designated spaces for pickup.
Yeah, and this, this is a, you know, a tough call from our point of view. You know, we technically, Jim is right on target, but, uh, from the changing uh, business models now, where there's certainly going to be more stuff ordered online and then you can pick it up for your shipping costs that, uh, or so. Is, are we going to see more of these?
I think Target's mentality when they proposed the strata expansion project, and just, just so you guys know, this is a national effort where, um, not just this store, but every single one of their stores are going to eventually go through this strata expansion project.
Well, it's real, it's really a Minnesota effort. Target's based in Minneapolis and so this is really Minnesota nice, okay? It's not a national effort. That's my opinion, okay?
When I, when I say national effort, I mean, they're trying to have their stores nationwide, have, um, their drive-up stalls expanded. But as I was saying, um, these drive-up stalls, we, the reason Target would like to expand them is because throughout the past year, we've seen a lot of pop- popularity because of COVID. Customers would like to go on, go onsite, get their order without actually going in the store and have that quick turnaround and be in and out.
You know, for many of these peoples, walking into the store is probably the only exercise they get in a week, you know?
Yeah. I, I don't think the gentleman is prepared to respond to that, Mike.
I was, well, clearly, uh, I was, uh, trying to make a joke, but if you didn't get it, you didn't get it.
So.
Ask a serious question?
Well, this is one, one more question, Tim.
Do we have time for serious questions?
This is not going to be, uh, uh, like Kohl's did. Kohl's, uh, eliminated, let's say their children's wear and they put a Amazon pickup station there. This is not going to be anything like that, is it? It's going to be strictly Target.
Right, strictly Target, their merchandise only.
Okay, because that generated a lot of additional trucks coming into the area, so.
And Tim, Tim, how does this work? Is this, is this, uh, similar to Whole Foods where you stay in your car and you answer a text or something and they bring it out to you?
I'm not entirely sure how the Whole Foods process works, but, uh, for Target, the customers will have a Target app on their phone. Um, for example, let's say it's this car, this car would pull up into stall one. Um, they would go onto the app and say, hey, so-and-so, I'm here. And they would, it would ping a Target employee to come out with their order, walk to them, give them an order, and then the customer would leave afterward.
So.
So that raises my question, if I could speak to Mike, that, that, that this is, that they're not typical parking spaces where someone parks and they walk in and they spend, you know, anywhere from 10 to 10 minutes to an hour in there and then walk back out. This is a lot of employee pedestrian traffic going out constantly to this. And I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense to have a center aisle. Here, they're walking down, uh, you know, there's just a safety concern that this is a little bit different of a typical parking, that there's a, there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic serving. You know, it's your employees. Uh, I'm just concerned about them walking behind cars and, you know, if I'm going, if I'm the employee and I'm bringing package out to stall seven and the, and the guy in stall five starts backing out, um, it's, I wonder if they shouldn't be going down the center of those car, you know, have, or, or, or put them over on the island where you've got a safe pedestrian. I don't know if anyone understands my point.
Yeah, I understand.
I know what you're saying exactly.
This is a lot more pedestrian traffic.
Is there any parking available on the side of the building or in back of the building for pickup?
One second, when I, while I address the first comment. So we're actually do propose a walkway in between.
Oh, good.
But, but, um, it's only if the town allows it. And we, we check through the code first beforehand and we don't think, um, Hadley allows compact spaces for a walkway to, um, go down the center. But if compact spaces is possible, we can definitely have that walkway go right down the middle and decrease the, the stall length to 16 feet instead of 18.
What do you mean by compact spaces?
So the, the spaces that we're proposing right now are nine by 18. A compact space would be instead nine by 16, which allows for a four-foot walkway right down the middle.
Okay, we have no code that requires a certain size parking space.
Okay.
We have, our parking requirement is based on square foot, square footage. So you need, I mean, if you design a parking space, let's say that's 10 foot deep and a vehicle can't fit in there, then that's, that's a, that's a, that's an issue between your customer and, uh, your, the store, if you would.
Right, okay.
Are, are the parking spaces that we're talking about here dedicated specifically to Target? Or may anyone in the mall park there?
They're designated for Target. And these drive-up spaces would, would be labeled drive-up so that, um, not just any customer would pull up and park there.
So is there some sign now that says Target Parking Only?
Well, Target owns that, that particular part of the parking lot and that building, so.
Okay.
That is also to the, uh, east of the main entrance. So there's nothing between, uh, there's nothing east of the main, there are no other merchants east of the main entrance.
Correct.
That would be really inconvenient to go to any place else from that location.
And going back to Mike's question earlier about the signage, I, I don't know, and maybe Jim or Bill can clarify, but I'm thinking that numbering the stalls, that signage isn't really what we're looking at in terms of square feet of signage, you know, that would be more in the line of like handicap space signage, which we don't limit that, you know, that's, that's assisting their parking. It's not brand, uh, sign, you know? I, I don't know, what's your opinion?
I, I, I would agree, Mark, I think it's directional and, uh, I don't think, given how far back that signage is from the road.
Yeah.
The only people who are going to be close enough to see it are people who are in the Target parking lot already.
Even if they got the Target name on it and the Target logo?
They, they don't have the logo, or sorry, they don't have the name. It's just, um, a little car, car icon.
But there's the logo right there.
Yeah, there's a logo.
Right, and it's, but it's directional to keep someone from parking there who's not using the drive-up function. So I, I, I still think it's directional in terms of telling you not to park there if you're not, if you haven't ordered, you know, through the app or.
So it looks like it's not even, it's not more than two, I, I, 3.5 feet by two feet.
Right.
Yeah, so, uh, what we would not want to see though is we would, uh, is that internally illuminated?
It is not.
Okay, we would not, uh, current bylaw does not allow internal illumination of any signage, so, uh.
What are this, what are the solar panels for on all the posts?
So these posts are, are actually internally illuminated. So now that you say that, we probably removed these from the design just for, um, this particular store.
The whole post is internally illuminated?
These, these beacons, these posts, correct. The solar panel provides energy for it to be internally illuminated.
That won't fly.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay, so I will make note of that.
I mean, if you wanted to use solar panel to do some kind of a, you know, like a gooseneck downlight on it, that's okay, but we don't allow, uh, internally illuminated.
Okay.
And, uh, Mike, to your earlier question, the fire chief and the building inspector are having a running battle with a lot of the stores in both malls, uh, about attempting to do, uh, uh, the, uh, drive-up, uh, delivery right at the curb. Because that's in, that's in the fire lane and, uh, they, they do not want anyone parking, stopping in front of a store. Uh, Old Navy got some static from the fire chief on that and some of the others, uh, have as well. So it's not ideal because it does involve having people cross a traffic pattern, but it is a quieter side of the, uh, store anyway, so, uh.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I would say that at the top there where you've got the crosswalk, that you, you might want to bring that to the center of that island and, and use your four-foot.
Right, a walkway.
That other scheme that you had, right?
Right. So, so one of my concerns was that you were going to start a trend here, but from what I'm hearing is you're the only store that could propose to do this because the, the rest of the stores don't independently own their parking.
For stores in general or?
Yeah, Whole Foods or Michael's or, uh, the bookshop, they, they don't own the prop, the, the parking spaces in front of them, so they couldn't put these types of structures in to, uh, designate pickup.
Is that, is that our jurisdiction or is that the mall ownership?
I think it's the malls.
If they were to, just as, as a kind of clarify, if the individual stores were to strike deals with the owners of the malls, they could request such things also.
Yeah.
Time will tell.
So I don't want to micro-manage something that is really a business decision. My only reservation about the pathway down the middle is I think most people are going to want to have what they pick up loaded into their trunk.
Right, but you've got a, you've got an aisle next to each car so they can come down the front to the, and then walk around the side of it.
That's correct.
Put it in the trunk, or some people might back in, but probably not.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that the, the, the aisle way down the middle and to the point there, they could walk down those little walk paths and reach the back of the car without having to walk behind.
Another car, right?
You know, in this case, they could walk by one, two, three, four, five, as many as eight cars to get to the last one in a row.
Yeah.
So from a safety point of view, I like the aisle down the middle.
As to my other question, is there parking available for Target in the back of the building or not? Or is everything in front?
There is talk, there is parking in the back. Um, I'm not positive if it's designated for Target, if I'm being honest. But I can get a, can talk to Target and find out.
Yeah, well, you know, you, since people, you could get around this whole issue about taking away parking spaces if this were put in the back and the groceries were delivered out the back door.
We don't know that, Mike, if there's parking out back, it's probably been calculated into the parking area.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I understand that, but at least we wouldn't have this issue in the front of the store for, as somebody said earlier, aesthetic purposes. Just, just a possibility. I mean, who cares where you pick it up? I'd, I'd rather pick it up in the back of the store rather than dealing with all the traffic in the front of the store. But it's my opinion. Could you look at that? Could you look at that?
Yeah, to that point, um, a lot of stores, well, it's in Target's opinion that, um, customers won't be able to see the signage if it were in the back for the stalls, if they were in the back. So they would more, more likely be lost and wouldn't be able to find the spaces. And just.
I'm not giving it enough credit.
To, to go back to the, the traffic point that was made earlier, um, if I could elaborate a little bit on the, the Target app, the Target app provides each customer with a designated time that they should, estimated time that they should arrive. So, you know, there would never, never be a case where Target would send a text out to 30 customers, let's say, and have 24 customers here, but six of them wouldn't have a space. It's very controlled traffic.
Right.
It's not, it's not like 10 people show up at once.
Right, you're, you're trying to avoid, um, jam-ups.
Right.
Do you have any statistics on how many, what percentage of the Target customers in Hadley have pickup?
We don't have statistics specifically in Hadley.
So that, so that this request is basically based on some national average? So that, so that this request is basically based on s- some national average rather than Hadley specific stuff?
Correct.
Well.
Well, I mean, the the fact is you have twenty four parking spaces there, so the end, the fact you have twenty four says that you need twenty four spaces and that you could have most of those spaces filled at one point in time or another. Because if you schedule, if your point of scheduling the vehicles is so accurate, you could get get along with far fewer of those parking spaces.
Exactly, exactly, my, exactly my point, I'm gonna take a ride down there tomorrow just to do a little reconnaissance and I'm gonna see over a thirty minute period how many people have pickup. Because they obviously haven't done their due diligence on this.
Be, you're requesting twenty four spaces, twelve on a side, so at any point in time, we have to assume that you would have twenty to twenty two of those spaces filled.
Impossible.
Okay, but so if you don't, if you're gonna schedule so closely, if you're not gonna be filling those spaces, then you need far fewer.
Right.
Okay.
Um I suspect what you're gonna find is that there there are, there are gonna be peak spots, just like with everything else, that uh probably uh Saturday afternoon is gonna be very busy and I would venture to guess that Wednesday morning there won't be many pickups, um but I think this is sort of getting into micromanaging, they, yes, they're, they have the parking spaces there, they're, the spaces aren't going away. They are being used for Target customers. And frankly, I think it's far enough back that unless it's creating a some kind of uh parking lot turmoil, um I'm not too worried about it. Um it's it's sort of out of sight, out of mind.
Well, but the fact is they're eliminating six hundred and fifty feet, six hundred and fifty square feet of parking.
Correct.
With this layout.
Yes, they they have to demonstrate.
I just want, I want, I mean, I have, with the overall scope of what they're doing, I have no problem with it, everything seems to be fine, as long as they put the middle, the aisle down the middle for safety, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to be sure they still comply with the two for one parking, that's that's my one concern.
And do they have to um uh Tim, you you mentioned that you're you're losing six spaces, I calculate you're losing eight. Because I look at the, if your drawings to scale, I'd look at the aisles next to it and where you have twelve spaces plus aisles, they have sixteen cars, so you're losing four per row, so you're losing eight eight spaces, um do they, uh how do we put that into their two for one? They're reducing the number of parking in the same amount of space because they're putting more aisles. So is there a calculation to subtract the aisle area from the parking area? Is that?
The the walking aisles, as they had in a previous drawings, are six foot wide by nine foot deep on each side, so there were two, four, six, eight, they're losing twelve times six times nine, which is six hundred and forty eight square feet of parking area.
So I think we just need the answer to how many square feet they had, how many square feet they had to start with.
That's right, we don't, we don't know that, we don't, we haven't seen that calculation, but if if they still need two for one when this is all said and done, then this is fine.
Okay.
With the safety measures that we've said and no internal lighting on the on the posts.
Right, so I will get um parking calks with the two for one requirement being met. I'll have a walkway added and I will remove the the beacon from the drawing and the plans. Is there, I think I touched on everything, was that it?
No, I mean, the internal illumination is a no, meet the two for one parking and you should be pretty well to go.
All right.
If you're planning to do this all hours and so there will be pickup after after sunset, you know, in the winter, you may want to just look at modifying your pylon instead of having an internal lamp, have an external two lamps that shine down on either side so that people can see what yeah, they can safely see at night what number stall they're playing to, but I guess I'm, I guess the other argument is they're pulling in, their headlights will illuminate it.
The the parking lots are already pretty well illuminated, Mark.
Yeah, I guess.
Just a quick question, what happens around the holiday season when all the parking spaces in the mall are full and people see that these pickup things are empty and people pull in and go in the mall and shop for two hours, is it gonna be some type of monitoring of that?
That'll be a business problem that Target will have to deal with by themselves.
I just wanted to point something out to you, I'm thinking ahead of here.
Yeah, yeah, cuz that.
That's a target issue, not a zoning issue.
Right, it'll throw off their scheduled um arrivals for pickup if there's no.
Yeah.
I'm sure that they have people paid to think about that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a hypothetical, I I can't answer.
So are are there twenty four stalls in Houston, Texas for each Target and there's twenty four in Hadley, are you, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they're they're working towards getting twenty four at each of their Target stores.
Each of the superstores or whatever you call it, yeah.
Yep.
So it's driven by the size of the store, not the size of the market.
Right, probably.
Yes, each, you're correct, it's each of their superstores, not um, not one of their smaller stores.
Right, because it's it's designed to handle a certain amount of volume, it has a certain number of cash registers, it all works out to a certain volume. I used to work for the postal service and we had all different model templates for towns or ci- ci- cities retail and it was all calculated uh down to, you know, minutes and people and dollars per sale and all, you know.
Well, if you're, if you ever been in Houston, Texas in the middle of August, I guarantee you twenty four of these slots will be filled. Not so sure about Hadley.
Yeah, again, I I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, we meet the first and third Tuesday of every month, basically on Zoom like this one is. We come back in two weeks with these questions answered, you'll be all set.
All right, perfect, that's all I had for you guys, thank you, Yenena.
Uh gentlemen, did, just out of interest, I don't recall, did uh Whole Foods come to us with their uh drive up parking spaces and signs and all that, I don't remember that.
I don't believe uh most of them have, but most of them aren't doing, if they're throwing up signs in the parking lot, uh they are you know, so I'm thinking more like uh I'm more familiar with Home Depot and Lowe's and how they're doing it. It's really temporary COVID related and uh this seems to be more of a change based on a um business plan.
Right, yeah. Maybe they, although, sorry, they're putting up something in a lot, Mark, they still have the same number of parking areas.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, you know, I mean, the writing on the pavement, pickup only or whatever it may be, there's really no difference as far as the parking areas go.
Right, they didn't add the aisles in in between spaces, which eliminated spaces, right?
Right, I mean, one of them put in tractor trailer drive-throughs or trailer drive-throughs, while it's still the same on a parking area, it's still valid. And I see regular cars parked there all the time, including me. All right. Um.
Of course, thanks, guys, have a good night.
Yep, thank you, Tim. Okay, the Hadley planning board will conduct a public Zoom public hearing on Tuesday, April twenty 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 one, beginning at six forty five P M. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of Philip Price for a special permit to create an accessory apartment at one thirteen Middle Street. Plans are available upon request via email to planning@hadlyma.org. Uh published twice, I think is that March twenty four and thirty one, Mr. Philip Price, you're up.
How are you? Um yeah, we are proposing to build a in-law apartment um next to our house, which would be about five hundred and fifty square feet, it's gonna be on the uh existing footprint of the old garage that was put in there, I guess, when the house was built around fifty five. Um it's gonna be slightly differently shaped, um it's gonna be connected to our house by a a sunroom uh foyer kind of thing. Um there, we did request of forty three foot ver- uh Z B A variance that was granted to us, uh cuz it's a little closer to the sidewalk than than the town normally allows. Um we also got a license uh to allow for our slightly unusual parking situation, where we kind of go over part of the town property. Um Conservation Commission says we're hundred, more than a hundred feet from the culvert over there. Uh but yeah, this is for my elderly mom, who's gonna be uh moving down with us sometime in next year, hopefully.
And you want a public sewer, right, Phil?
Yeah, public sewer.
Okay.
Um I believe we've got all the plans filed there. Um I don't have, I don't have them at my fingertips in terms of of you all looking at them, I think, Billy, you said you were gonna.
I did send them around, but you always bring them up.
If you want to share, that'd be great.
Okay. Let me.
In honor of tonight's public hearing, I watched A Brief Encounter last night.
Oh, that's a great movie.
Yes, I love your songs, Celia.
Oh, thank you, my gosh.
So let's see, there, this actually came in one, two, three, seventieses, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what, let me try a couple of things here.
A couple of them are, yeah, sort of repeats with very, with a couple of different things on, but.
Okay, now are you seeing this?
No, I'm looking at your, just at your regular, your first.
Need to unshare and reshare and then.
Yeah.
Pick the window with the PDFs.
Pure screen, okay, so let's uh start with this one. Now, it's not the way.
Yeah, it's just the site plan there. The survey.
Let me do it this way. Now that indicates that it is, you seen that?
Yeah, we see, I see it, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And that shows that you've already taken care of the the uh the parking versus the town of Hadley, you're approved of that?
Yeah, we are, we have a contract.
And your existing building is already uh existing non-conforming with the front yard setback and you're not making that any worse.
Yeah, exactly. Same, same uh same line there.
And it looks like your side yard is over twenty feet, it's probably required at what, fifteen, maybe?
I believe it's fifteen.
I'll tell you, Mark, you've picked up the jargon here pretty good in about a year and a half, it took me about five years to get there.
I had four, four good teachers.
Anything more from this? I'll I'll bring up some of the, some of the others next.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Was there anything at the back of the site, uh Bill, that you were just showing it, you know, that drawing, could you have scrolled up?
Uh no, there's nothing relevant in the back, everything was in the front.
Okay.
So this is labeled the, I'm sorry, that did not work, right?
That's the same one where where we delineated new third parking spot.
This is the parking plan.
Right, yeah.
Get rid of that one, parking plan is there showing that they have adequate parking. It's in Middle Street, uh let's see, this is the floor plan.
Yep, yep. It's gonna be slightly different on the inside, but it's not, the outside isn't gonna change at all.
And so that does not exceed nine hundred square feet, is that correct?
That's correct, this one's, let's see, oh, it's five hundred and ten square feet for that, and I believe the the sunroom area is about, uh I think it's around two hundred, maybe a little less.
Looks like fifteen by ten would be a hundred and fifty, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Look at that out. Uh and let me see. An exterior rendering here.
Some of the windows are gonna be a little different, but not much else.
And it's.
Yeah.
When was that house built, in the late fifties?
Fifty five, uh my wife's grandfather built it.
Yeah.
I guess so Phil, so Phil Reed was your grandfather-in-law, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, he was.
Okay. He used to be the Gazette reporter when we were kids, like for Hadley.
Yep.
He was the editor, I thought he was the editor of the Gazette.
I don't think he was the editor.
He was the Hadley, I know, he was the Hadley reporter, reporter for years.
Oh, I told you, his wife was my fifth grade teacher and I was the teacher's pet, I'll tell you.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
I love to tell flora, it's great.
And now here is one more.
Yep. So showing the elevation there.
No concerns height-wise, the area is okay, the setbacks are good. It's um matches the existing context.
Yeah, it's the idea.
I don't think we have any, I don't see any issues.
Oh, I think it's a really nice looking building, I really do.
I think it'll be nice when it's done.
Yeah.
Get all the gardening stuff around it too, it's gonna be nice. On, we're a Toshi Kishima contractor, he's gonna build it. He just built a, we put a little deck behind our house here to this past year. Did a great job.
Okay.
Right.
That's pretty much it, I think. Questions?
Butters have been notified, no one's here to create an uproar.
I want to see anybody.
They have been notified, they were all sent the the uh notice.
Everyone I've talked to is aware.
So I'll go through the checklist if there are no other questions. It's a complete separate housekeeping unit, only one. Site plan shows all interior and exterior changes, complies with the bylaw uh as to required elements. The elevation plans, there'll be uh control of erosion, dust and silt during and after construction. Not greater than nine hundred, minimum parking provided, comply to all standards of the Board of Health and the building inspector. So I will make a motion to grant the application for a special permit uh for an accessory apartment. Uh project is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw, the project is not detrimental to the established future character. Work will be conducted in accordance with the submitted plans, which I will attach to the decision, so we are clear what we are approving.
In in memory of my fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Reed, I would like to second that motion.
Okay, well, hang on a second, I got a bit to go. But I will, I will mark you as a second, uh for this specific intended use of uh the premise. Um, approval for the specific intended use of, uh, the premises for an accessory apartment. The special permit is automatically revoked if the owner no longer lives on the premises. Um, the accessory apartment shall never be enlarged beyond the 900 square feet allowed by the bylaw. Uh, occupied by no more than two adults plus related children. Um, special, uh, the owner must occupy one of the dwelling units and must provide a notarized letter that they, that they, that is what they are doing. Um, and you'll provide, that will get recorded at the registry of deed. You'll also provide a notarized letter to the building inspector. Um, if the property is sold, the new owners, in order to exercise the permit, must, uh, themselves agree that they will occupy one of the dwelling units. And this approval does not excuse the project from compliance with any other provisions of the Hadley zoning bylaw, not specifically addressed herein. Um, and is subject to approval of other boards if and as required.
That's the motion. Mr. Sarzinski has seconded it. Any other discussions? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Good luck so much.
Phil, did I hear, uh, Mark say that you're a composer?
I'm a musician, yeah. I do write music, yeah.
You know Mason Daring?
I don't, don't.
Marblehead, no?
What, from Marblehead?
From Marblehead, but he grew, he went to college around here. He, he does scores for movies and he did Loan Some Dolls. And, uh, friends with Redford. He did some Redford stuff. I just thought you might be, know who he is. His real name's Kevin, but his stage name is Mason.
Oh, now I think, now his name looks, I'm sure I've seen him on some credits.
Okay. I was curious.
So Jim, will you drop that file off at the planning board box at Town Hall sometime?
That is in an envelope in the planning board box, Bill.
Okay.
With the mailing, with the remaining mailing labels.
One quick question. I think I owe you, uh, a fee, right, for the, for the application?
Oh, you never paid the fee for that?
No, I didn't, I didn't get a, I don't, I didn't know how much it was.
Well, $350.
350. I'll get that over tomorrow. Is that okay?
Yeah, that goes to the town clerk.
Make it out, make it out to town clerk.
Name also to the town of Hadley.
Town of Hadley, okay.
Yeah.
Right, town of Hadley. And now, and now we're in like, uh, what is it, a 21-day, uh?
It's 21 days from when I get the decision filed with the town clerk, which may be probably sometime next week.
Okay, 21 days from there.
Well, on the, on the 21st day, Phil, if nobody appeals, you can get the, the actual appeal is 20 days. On the 21st day, you're gonna apply for the building permit.
Okay. And what, what, that process consists of the apply for the building permit, um, would our contractor go over?
Your contractor should take care of that.
Okay, I'll throw it to him. Okay. Great. Thank you so much, buddy.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, I, we have the invoice for, well, we can talk about the zoning articles, Phil. Um, Bill, did you get those to the? Or do you want me to email them to the?
Uh, I, I will, I'll take care of getting it there. Um, I talked to Carolyn, uh, this afternoon.
Okay.
And she, uh, her, her target is to get the warrant to town council by Friday.
Okay.
So what I did, uh, just before the meeting started was I sent around to everyone, uh, the final drafts of the bylaws. Jim and I, 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 I worked on them. Uh, Jim, um, took a look at them. I think we both agree that this seems to be the final version of all the drafts that were floating around. But, um, I did send all of you and Ken Komi a, um, a copy of the final three bylaws. If you just take a look at it and if you see anything in there that doesn't seem right, uh, just, just let me know and I'll, uh, get it corrected. And then I'll, then I will send everything into, uh, uh, I'll send everything into Carolyn.
Okay. Just for everybody's information, the original request to publish in the Gazette was the 19th and the 26th. However, the Gazette goofed and they were gonna publish, they published them on the 16th and they were gonna do it again on May 3rd. Luckily, it was caught in time and the second publication is going to be this Friday. And so we're still all set with the proper, proper publications in the Gazette. It was just done a few days ahead of time, so we're, we're still good.
They seem like they could use some help organizing their legal ads.
Well, meeting date, Jim?
The town meeting date, I think, is May 6th.
May 22nd, rain date, May 23rd, outside at Hopkins.
May 26th?
That, May 22nd, Saturday.
Oh, May 22nd, okay.
Rain date, Sunday, the 23rd.
Jim, what was the date of the first publication for 416?
416 and the second one will be 423. Friday and Friday. Is they going to be outside of Hopkins, Jane, or is it gonna be at this, the, uh, fire station?
It will be outside Hopkins where last spring was.
Okay, thank you.
That works well because they have the, uh, power in for the sound speakers and the bigger space. Hopefully it won't be quite so warm as last year's spring meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that worked. The outside one was nice.
Yeah, a lot of people worked hard to make that happen and especially public safety and they deserve lots of things.
Okay. So the, also in the same legal ad was the notice of the, how would I say it? The, the re, the requirement of the public notice for the public hearing on heirloom collection. They were both in the same legal ad. And, um, I sent out that notice to the, all the departments in town that might have a concern. Fire, um, police, clerk, board of health, arrest. And they've all, anybody that's replied, which is actually most of the ones of, of concern, have all replied the heirloom collection. They've had no issues with them. So. With that said, I'll make a motion to pay the Gazette for the legal ad for the zoning articles and for the heirloom collection of notice. The total is $708.76.
I'll second.
I'm gonna have, Nick, when we have the, when, uh, I'm assuming that Al's gonna be at the public hearing, Bill, for the next one, cuz I sent it to him as well?
Yeah.
I'll ask him to simply pay $300 of that fee, which is less than it would have cost for the, for the filing. And it saved him some money and it saved us some money by putting them all together. Okay, we have a motion in the second to pay the Gazette 708.76. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. What else do we have?
I, I see, I see Jane's here. Does she have anything, observation she wants to make or she's just visiting us?
I was just here to tell you the dates of town meeting and anything else that might come up that I could help with.
Well, we're, we're good right now.
Sounds great and thanks for keeping the town in line.
That's, that's all. Well, we did get a disaffair for, for Jane's information as well. She could pass the segment. I'm sure we'll, either Bill or I are both to be at tomorrow night's segment's meeting, but there was a.
No meeting tomorrow night.
Is finance, finance committee meeting on our budget tomorrow night?
Okay, well, there is, we got a re-letter from citizens of Rocky Hill Road, um, raising a point about the old gonadic farm stand being basically reinvigorated as a farm stand, and I guess they're calling it a breakfast bar. And they were saying how they thought that it's zone ag residential. It's an illegal use. This can't happen and so on and so forth. However, um, Bill could explain this in much more succinct letters that I can, but the state law has changed regarding a farm stand with associated, uh, food selling in ag residential districts. That is why Barstow's Farm Stand exists. That is why Cook Farm Stand exists. And that is partially why, um, Hadley Sugar Shack exists. Because there is an exemption. If it is a farm stand serving a certain percentage of local produce, they are allowed to have basically a small restaurant associated with it.
So the select board has also seen that letter and the select board's position is any complaints that are received without signatures on them are ignored.
Okay. Okay, but just everybody's, just for the, for Jane's information, that's, and I think Tommy already knew that.
Yep.
Um, that's where it's coming from, that their letter is about, I wanna say, which mostly wrong. It, it was incorrect. It was correct probably 30, 25 years ago, but the law has changed greatly since then.
So one of the advantages of having people sign complaints, questions, concerns is that someone could respond to them and give them that information.
Yeah. But the, the planning board has taken the same stand. If we get anonymous letters without signatures, we basically ignore them as well. Because I said this many years ago, it's tough to chase a ghost.
And, and you can have ghosts making accusations that are totally erroneous and spend a lot of time going around the bush for no reason.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm glad the town's got basically agreement on ignoring anonymous things.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that's it. Okay.
Thanks, Jane.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Dwyer?
I have nothing else.
Anybody else have anything?
I would just say I hope that the, uh, country heals after the verdict that came in and that we don't see an outbreak of.
We would certainly hope that that is a step in the right direction.
Exactly, exactly.
Any, if not, anything else? Mr. Tom, you got anything, Tom? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Meeting is history. Thank you and thank you, John. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jane.